For your reference.
Okay. We don't need to stand probably, right?
Right.
Okay, we're gonna call to order the regular city council meeting of October twenty fourth, two thousand twenty.
August.
Adam clerk the role please.
Dixon.
Here.
Bavacqua.
Here.
Albrecht.
Here.
Heathley.
Here.
Peterson.
Here.
Sage.
Here.
Salvia.
Here.
Very good. Would we all now rise for the pledge of allegiance, please? I pledge allegiance to the flag.
Flag.
Of the United States of America and to the republic which stands one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Welcome, everybody. I just want to uh wish Mayor Pro Tem Bavacqua happy birthday today.
Ah, happy birthday.
Yes.
Right.
I wouldn't want to spend it with anyone else.
Right. Mayor Pro Tem could have done many, many different things and he made the wise choice to spend them with us, so happy birthday.
Thank you, sir.
Next on to public comments, schedule non-schedules. First is a September eleventh memorial update, Mr. City Manager. You're on mute.
Yep, we're actually gonna end the phrase of the year, right?
Yeah.
Um, we're gonna have the the fire chief provide a little bit of information of what's been going on over in front of the fire station. Chief?
Thank you. Chief, so good evening, council. Happy birthday, Mayor Pro Tem. Well, probably have cake and ice cream for you later, I hope. Uh, so anyway, uh, if you've kind of watched in the last few months, the transformation of the really the the corner between second and third street there at the fire station. Um, Hero's Point has been under construction since the governor took the restriction off of landscapers. Over the last, well, today, they planted about a hundred and fifty of the plants that are going in. That's about half of the total number. Um, the fountains are operational, all of the walks are in, including the ties to the sidewalks on second and third street. The uh ceremony for the dedication is set for September eleventh. Uh, we made a request to the military to get a military flyover, so we were given a timeframe of between twelve thirty and one o'clock. So that's kind of when we're looking to go ahead and start the ceremony. Um, because of, we were given the uh, given the timeframe. We haven't gotten the authorization because I had to get a letter from the FAA. Um, and so all of our paperwork has been submitted, so we're not sure where we'll be at from that standpoint. Obviously, uh, we're still limited to an outdoor event of a hundred people or less. So we're being cautious about those sort of things. Um, obviously, it would be great to have all of our council there if we can. Um, and then what our plan to do is is to set up some simulcasting so that we can put it over the uh, the web so that people would like to uh, come in onto it uh, and and watch the ceremony. If you remember, Hero's Point um, is really kind of dedicated to fire, police, and our military. We have some speakers set up uh, from police, fire, and um, and armed forces to go ahead and do the dedication. There'll be some things that will not be uh, ready to go, and those will be the the granite monuments that will be there because of uh, uh, of issues with COVID and the man you and the um, the quarries to be able to get the the stone uh, for it. Um, so that's kind of where we're at right now. If you have a chance, uh, please stop down and and take a look at uh, the activity of what's going on, and I think at the end, it'll be a very uh, it'll be a great asset to the city. It'll be a another pocket park, and I think what's a critical part of our our uh, our downtown to where people can come and enjoy and reflect on the men and women who've served our community and and uh, from a a military standpoint, uh, fire and police, and also our community volunteers, because without our community volunteers, I think that that also is what makes our city kind of special for the things that go on uh, from that standpoint. Do you want to talk about they're not gonna have pizza from New York? Yeah, statue. Yeah, yeah, well, that's part of the granite. We won't have any of that stuff right now, so. So if he, uh, any questions, or I don't know if if you if councils had a chance to swing by and take a look at the activity, but if you drove by there yesterday and you drove by there today, um, it's starting to look like a a very nice um, place with all of the plantings of the trees and and things that are going in right now.
Uh, council member Peterson.
Yeah, thank you, Mayor. Um, if I did, I was there today, drove by, and it looks awesome, so it's nice to see it coming along as quickly as it 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 now to get ready for the eleventh, so, thank you.
Further comments?
Yes.
Uh, council member Salvia.
Chief, just wanted to confirm where the, are the donors able to be there as well?
Yes, in fact, um, we've been seeing the donors almost every day, and in fact, it was kind of funny. He came over and smoked his first ceremonial cigar sitting on the new park bench watching the uh, the fountain, so yes, they'll, they will be there, and um, the Elliott's have really been such gracious uh, uh citizens or residents of Rochester and have real really given from their heart, and all of this is uh, is not possible without their generosity and and attention. So, you know, not only um, you know, what it really speaks is a wonderful place now for our citizens and uh, with the COVID and and I think what'll happen continuing in the future, we see so much walking traffic down now by the fire station. Um, so a lot of people are are coming in and taking a look, and I really have to to compliment the planning commission because when we did the presentation several years ago, I forget which one of the uh, the planning commissioners made a comment, they said, "Well, chief, I see the interior sidewalks. Are you gonna connect to the city sidewalks?" And I said, "Well, we we didn't think about that." Um, and so we put those into the plan, and if you want to, it it really was a great suggestion because it now kind of is a place that uh, people that are walking by are kind of invited into that area uh, to be able to relax and to look at things and and reflect, so um, a great addition to the whole plan.
Good. Any other comments? Okay. Thank you, chief. Uh, next is approval of the minutes of the regular meeting of August tenth, two thousand twenty.
All moved.
Motion by council member Peterson. Or, or by council member Sage, discussion. Madam clerk, the role, please.
Dixon.
Yes.
Bavacqua.
Yes.
Albrecht.
Yes.
Heathley.
Yes.
Peterson.
Yes.
Sage.
Yes.
Salvia.
Yes.
Very good, thank you. There is no consent agenda tonight. Old business and table of items is discussion regarding increasing the water bonding amount from six point two million to six point eight million based on updated estimates. Mr. City Manager.
Yep, I'm happy to uh, start off, and then Sandy uh, from Public Works also can add in. Basically, uh, what's the the memo in our packet is talking about uh, we started off this adventure back in twenty seventeen when the state uh, happened to issue a new uh, copper and lead requirement. So all the way back in twenty seventeen, eighteen, nineteen, and now twenty, our estimates are uh, basically four years old. By the time we would actually start the projects, we'd be looking at almost five years. So prices have adjusted. In addition, there were a few areas that we, instead of just having what I would call a a a patch or quilting kind of uh, component in the road where we would be actually cutting in for each line, um, and then just fixing that portion, we actually decided to open cut and actually replace the the road as part of a similar complete street uh, concept that we've done in the past. So that will uh, not just uh, correct the water issue, but also the road issue on those certain locations. Um, Sandy, if you want to add anything else to that?
Um, I just wanted to point out that the original estimates were six point two million dollars. We're asking for this to be increased to six point eight. This doesn't mean that's what we're going to take our bonds out for. It is actually an up to amount so that we can publish our notice of intent, and when the actual bids come back, which are due um, due in a few months, we will able to uh, better gauge exactly what we'll need, but the engineers has been um, as mayor is, I'm sorry, Blaine pointed out that they would be increased above the six point two based upon other cost estimates our engineers are getting back from other projects right now.
And if I could just add one more thing, um, uh, instead of being left at the six point two, and then we'd actually have to either cash fund the remaining amount, right now, we're seeing loans uh, in the range of one, one point eight seven five, so just south of two percent. So to actually borrow the amount, uh, if we would have gone back, we would have been about two point five to two point seven five was the range back in twenty seventeen that we were looking at if we would have gotten the approval. Um, so now, uh, we've just seen some of the uh, actual awards at one point eight seven five, so just south of the two percent, so um, instead of having to use up some of our cash or our reserve funds, um, that's why we're asking for that up to authority tonight.
Good, council. Uh, council member Peterson.
Thank you, Mayor. So I guess question is, what is the bond payment on this then? What does that look like for twenty years?
City manager.
Yep, let me pull that up.
And it's not a bond, right? It's a loan.
Yeah, it's technically, it is a low interest loan, but uh, we actually have to issue it through a bond, so it's through the state.
And then, I guess, then I'm sorry, Mayor, the next question I have is like, how soon would this get started? Because since the costs are going to be so much higher, you know, the six hundred thousand is a lot of extra costs due to the, you know, cost of doing business today. If, would that be lesser if it's not started until later and some of these costs go down? Or do they anticipate just the rise in cost continue, the continuing? I mean, I just know that the ma- the demand right now is causing everything to be more expensive, so.
Well, with our engineers, they did explain, yes, if the cost did start to go down, we would need less money and we wouldn't have to fulfill the top of the bond, but we would rather um, look at those costs that we anticipate right now and not have to come back to you if the costs and the bids come in above, which is what they anticipate them being right now. So I believe the the bids that would come back, uh, the project would be awarded this fall and be started next year.
Right, but are we in, I mean, that's in that, I understand. However, with them knowing that we could go up to six point eight million, so are are, do you anticipate anyone really coming in less than that? Or are they just going to come in at what we're, you know, saying not to exceed?
Well, it's a competitive bid, I think, isn't it? So.
It is. Uh, what what some of the other one, I mean, we we just don't know. It could come in at six point two, could come in at six point five, it could come in at seven or eight. We we just don't know until we actually get the uh, award uh, or the proposals back to issue a a reward to uh, an award of contract.
My, if I may follow up, Mayor, so my next question is, what what are they actually saying is the biggest uh, increase right now? What part of their job, I mean, are they, you know, of doing this job is, has the highest increase in cost right now?
Well, the the two main components is the pipe and then the a- actual road.
Okay.
Um, council member Albrecht.
Um, I just, um, I'm gonna, I think uh, council member Salvia will make a motion. I just had a question about uh, the resolution authorizing supplemental notice of intent to issue bonds. Um, I brought that up at the infrastructure meeting last week. The date there still reflects the tenth of August, should be the twenty fourth of August. So city clerk Leon O'Connor can make that change. Um, now, um, wait for somebody else to make the motion.
Got it.
Council member Salvia.
Okay, um, so kind of um, following on council member Peterson's questioning. Um, you know, this has a project that we have revisited the cost on it several times, back to city manager's point. Um, you know, back in twenty seventeen, and the infrastructure committee keeps looking at this. I mean, this is the, you know, really the biggest infrastructure project that we have as a city to update our water system. So back in twenty seventeen, it was six million. And then we did some design changes and we brought the cost down to five point nine million. Then it was updated in twenty nineteen at the public hearing on October fourteenth based on the construction cost that we had with Ludlow, so we learned that things were were more expensive. So that took the cost back up to six point four million. We have then worked through some design changes, I'll call it, and had the cost at um, six point seven million. And then with this change, we're looking to um, with no design change, just looking to make sure that we have funds available to complete the work. Um, you know, Sandy mentioned that um, the the drafts have been submitted. Um, permits are expected to be pulled by September eleventh, and the bids to go out uh, due back on October nineteenth. So um, you know, this is a very important project. If you look back to the uh, public hearing back in October of twenty nineteen, um, this affects um, a lot of the areas in the city that really need an update to the water system. Specifically, South Street um, gets a boost, which I think will help for development and improvement there, and having safe and um, as highest quality possible water for our residents is very important. Um, so I'd make a motion to proceed with the bonding, uh, the low cost. It does help us, the fact that we're getting a lower interest rate uh, for the six point eight million, so this is an adjustment from six point two to six point eight million.
Support.
Motion by council member Salvia, support by council member Albrecht. Further discussion? Mr. City Manager.
Yeah, I just want to answer Anne's question. So depending on the percentage that comes back, we'd be looking at an annual cost of around three thirty, three hundred and thirty thousand to three hundred and sixty thousand.
Okay, I have another question, Mayor. Thanks, thanks, City Manager.
Member Peterson.
Yep, so the other one is, because this is the old part of town over on South Street, um, have they done any of the lead and copper testing along that first and foremost to find out if there would be any need for or possibility of receiving grants from the state on this?
The water department has evaluated all of the records based upon um, things that were available to us to determine if there were any lead lines based upon the actual uh, records that we have. It does not appear that Rochester actually has any water mains that contain lead in them. We do, however, have some that have galvanized service leads, and those are on the residential sides or near residential zones, and those are the ones that we are working on our, um, the separate program to replace. It will be coming before you at next meeting to discuss.
Okay, so actually, the whole flow issue has been what uh, the fire chief has brought up in the past regarding the South Street for this project. I just wanted to make sure that because it's been uh, spoken of as being old that it doesn't have um, the lead and the things that we would need to worry about, or that would cause a higher increase in doing this project in the future with the um, the things that have to be done because of lead and copper going on in the rest of the state, so that was the reason for asking these questions.
Very good. Uh, madam clerk, the role, please.
Dixon.
Yes.
Bavacqua.
Yes.
Albrecht.
Yes.
Heathley.
Yes.
Peterson.
Yes.
Sage.
Yes.
Salvia.
Yes.
Thank you. There's no public hearings tonight. Onto legislative deliberations, the tree ordinance amendment. First reading introduction, uh, chairman, tree chairman Albrecht.
Thank you, Mayor and 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 city council. Um, as you may recall, we presented this uh, at the June twenty second city council meeting, and at that time, we had um, um, some participation on the phone call uh, in our virtual meeting by some of the HOAs. Uh, we approved the first reading at that time, and we uh, said we would get with the HOAs and 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 associations and come back to this uh, council. Uh, if there are minor changes, we would, we would request a second reading. Well, what what's happened in, since that time, and and city attorney Kroc has done a good job of articulating what's happened in not only the memorandum dated August nineteenth, but the revised ordinance highlighted to show the changes we've made, uh, the updated um, comments and summary of changes from meetings with the HOAs. So what's happened is the the agent, the tree committee, excuse me, uh, which uh, Mayor Pro Tem Bavacqua, uh, council member Salvia, uh, two residents, myself, and then Nick and Jeff have been on. We invited uh, all HOAs to participate, and over the last several weeks, um, we've had some very good discussions, some robust discussions. I would personally, on behalf of the all the members of the of the tree committee, wanted to thank Larry Williams, Terry Crockett, Rich Ken Denzek, and Peter Scolario from the Stony Creek and Stony Point um, HOAs to really uh, speaking up and working with us in a very collaborative manner. Um, uh, it took us a while, uh, because it's, here we are, um, uh, just about two months later, but I think it was prudent for us to have those meetings and keep going back, different bites at the apple until we really could uh, mutually agree that we'd addressed uh, their issues in in a very um, respectful manner, and I I I would think based on some of the emails we've received over the weekend from council member Salvia and Mayor Pro Tem Bavacqua from the uh, HOA members, that um, we've done a good job of that, and again, I I thank Nick and 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 uh, city attorney Kroc for uh, um, sort of leading that charge. As part of that, initially, the first meeting we had, and then again, in between the meetings with the HOAs, we we, the whole, all five members of the tree committee and and Jeff and Nick were there, we also had meetings ourselves, so we we were meeting literally every week for the last eight weeks to to to, as I kept using the 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 illustration to get this o- over the goal line. Um, so I think we're we're there right now. So, uh, one of the earlier meetings, uh, we, the city council, uh, the HOA leadership had sent us a plethora of information, some case studies, and where they had issues with the uh, uh, the original ordinance that we had approved for the first reading. And um, we broke those down item by item and 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 really addressed them. That packet is in, that recap is in your packet uh, dated August eighteenth, two thousand twenty, and you'll see there were ten different areas that we talked about. We went back and forth. We came up with uh, what we thought were solutions, and then we came back to our our city attorney to to work those into the ordinance that you see highlighted in the, again, in the packet you received. That's, while these were HOA members, board members on these meetings, I want to be clear that these changes we put in here apply to both condo and homeowner associations as well as apartment complexes that have their own common areas. And really, the issue was, when we, when we presented this initially, we were focused more on residents, our tree canopy, and you know, how many trees to take down, et cetera, et cetera. And um, and uh, we we really needed to carve out how to treat these uh, again, condo and homeowner and associations and apartment complexes that have large common areas. While there weren't a lot of substantial changes from the original ordinance, um, we wanted to memorialize the things that Nick has done as the, you know, in in his role as a forester and 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 working with these associations so that it was, it was, it was in this ordinance, and and uh, city attorney Kroc did the, a very good job um, of doing that. Um, we feel that the ordinance that you have in there is consistent with the stating goals of providing reasonable changes to the tree ordinance, but we've taken seriously HOA's concern and have proposed uh, revisions to address those situations. While we had approved the first reading, we are recommending that we don't go to second reading, that we reintroduce this ordinance for first reading tonight, an introduction. Uh, and again, we've a- attached the fee resolution to city council for consideration, and we had talked about it, but really didn't bring it up in the June meeting. These fees would not go into effect until January first, two thousand twenty one. Again, a key point that is in the packet, but may maybe missed, so. On behalf of the members of the tree committee, along with the collaboration with the HOA boards, uh, I require, I make a motion to uh, move the ordinance for first reading and introduction.
Motion by council member Albrecht. Or? Support by Mayor Pro Tem Bavacqua.
And uh, Mayor, if there was anything I missed, I I really wanted, uh, I I would ask attorney Kroc to to weigh in uh, you know, before we get into some discussion.
Attorney Kroc, anything to add?
Uh, you know, councilman Albrecht did a great job. I would say that the 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 most important part from the subdivisions perspective, uh, that was an ad after hearing uh, their their concerns in in case studies is really in in section uh, twenty dash seventy-nine, we added an entire new subsection fourteen that essentially took um, the subdivision, anything with common areas like subdivisions, apartment complexes, we took a look at their case studies and said, okay, what what situations, you know, like this three free trees that we we've been hearing about, that doesn't really uh, doesn't really fit well with the condominium when it may have a single uh, single Sidwell um, versus a homeowner that would have a single Sidwell. Why would, why would those be treated the same? Um, so what we did is we broke them out into different types of common areas, um, whether it be uh, for the Boulevard or landscape areas uh, for those trees that uh, uh, are concerned like buffer or screen trees, uh, the heavily wooded areas um, that that some of the subdivisions uh, may have. Um, so we kind of broke those out individually, and I won't go through each of them because it's, you know, there's a lot of changes, and I think the summary document um, kind of, I I took the time to explain through there, um, but you you know, and again, this has, it always comes back to is is the landmark trees are are, as a carve out. You know, this doesn't trump the landmark trees and the subdivision, uh, homeowners association representatives, they were, they've always recognized that. They've never tried to fight the subcommittee, if you want to call it a fight. They didn't push back on on the landmark tree issue. So I I think with that, um, you know, there's, there's quite a few changes to the ordinance, but you know, those are the types of um, uh, you know, significant changes that we made uh, to respond to the homeowners associations, and and I think that uh, their representatives, if they were on, would say, uh, you know, that that their needs or their uh, thoughts were addressed. It may not be word for word how they would want it, but conceptually, I I think we we checked the boxes that they had concerns about. So I I think with that, and I think that, I think council member Albrecht's explanation uh, of the process was was a good one.
Very good. Council member Sage.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, and thank you to the subcommittee as well as the uh, very productive input from the HOAs, and I'm glad that we could incorporate a lot of uh, the information that they provided us via case study. So I wanted to call out specifically to one of the uh, subsections um, to see if there was any case study or analysis regarding their recommendations to the subcommittee board composition um, and a two or three, the either or, um, I I I need a little bit more understanding behind that.
Council member Albrecht.
Yeah, uh, thank you, council member Sage. Early on, um, one of the uh, requests um, was that they wanted to have uh, the tree committee made up of at least one person from an HOA board. Um, you know, we we talked about the different precedents of some committees having two, some committees having three. So where we met was having two or three being city council members. The three of us that are on right now, Mayor Pro Tem Bavacqua, council member Salvia, and myself, we may not be on the tree committee. That that'll be at the purview of the mayor if this be, if this, you know, passes of of, you know, who be, who becomes a of the tree committee. So where we went with the change, as you can see, is uh, three of five board members being city council members to two or three being city council members. So we gave some some uh, leeway in there, and again, we said that would be at the, again, uh, determination of the mayor in in uh, who makes up the tree committee when it gets, you know, officially uh, established.
Mr. Mayor, if I may add to that.
Attorney Kroc.
Um, so, you know, we, the subcommittee, even before the HOAs became involved, we we discussed as a committee, um, should we specifically identify um, like somebody from the building trades or some, you know, a particular resident? And uh, so the the discussion was to not specifically single out a particular trade that would have to be represented. Um, and so when we did uh, put this uh, these changes in, we did put in there a we did put in there a preference statement, um, for a, a member of the, uh, of an HOA or a, a apartment complex. And, uh, there, there's a question about that from the HOA representative saying, well, why does it just say a preference? And well, you know, there was, the idea was not to necessarily bind, um, future mayors, uh, or councils on this, but that would, it's a preference to, if there's one, that would be the, the preference to have somebody on there without a requirement. So that was a, a discussion for sure. Um, and I think we've addressed that too. You know, I'm sure they would still like to have a required spot, but we don't have a required spot for any of the, the different areas either.
As a follow-up, I'm just struggling with why we would have a subcommittee that will dictate basically application and enforcement of a, an ordinance that we are upheld via an elected position to administer, to where we could have them three residents doing the same job that we do via our elected position. I guess I'm, I need more understanding to that.
If I may.
Councilmember Albrecht.
Again, we, we also, uh, got into that, Councilmember Sage. And if you go to section twenty point, uh, dash eighty-six, we wanted to define the, the subcommittee in a, in a, in a little better way. We didn't want this to become an authoritative committee, but really a place so to provide guidance of recommendations to city administration. Uh, if we go back to why the establishment of this, of this tree subcommittee is when we put in place the moratoriums on the landmark trees. We were spending many city council meetings, um, addressing landmark trees and felt that having a, a, a committee, much like we do with other issues, that can look at some of these things before it comes to, or if even needs to come to, uh, uh, city council, was the establishment of, of this committee. You know, we just said, again, um, we're, we also wanted to provide the annual update on the tree canopy, how we're spending the tree fund. We want to do this in a positive manner. None of us, I, I think I can speak for, uh, Mayor Pro Tem Bavacqua and Councilmember Salvia. We don't want to be the, you know, the determination. We, we feel that most of this will be done by administration. And so that's why we rewrote section twenty point eighty-six to sort of highlight what, uh, we wanted the tree committee to be.
Councilmember Salvia.
Yeah, just to, just to further clarify that the only action that the tree committee can act upon is for request to remove landmark and historic trees. Other than that, they are advice, guidance, advisory, annual update, reading all the verbs there. It, it is the only an action is landmark trees. And it is also the language in section twenty eighty-five does give the mayor the opportunity to have three city council members. So really we've, we've kept the authority with city council in terms of how this committee would be structured.
So for clarification, then, the subcommittee could recommend the removal of a landmark tree. It must then go to council for approval.
Right.
Well, if I may, um, uh, so the, the, the idea with the landmark trees is that, uh, it would go, the initial request would go to the subcommittee and the subcommittee would make a decision, yes or no. Um, it, it's then up to, or the, the ability for, let's say it was a denial. Then it would be, then it would go up to city council. Or if it was an approval and someone had an issue with the approval of the removal, then they could take that up to city council. So it could just stop there, um, if, if, if the, um, these subcommittee would say no to removing the landmark tree. And then the, the parties were satisfied, it would stop there. But at either side, yes or no to the removal, would have the ability to take up the city council for, for a, if you, an appeal, if you will.
So the fi, the final appeal would be up to city council?
That's right.
So in the case where there is an approval without, um, any objection, that tree comes down without going in front of council, is that correct?
That's correct.
Well, is, is that the intent of this ordinance to basically be a separate council?
Yep.
I, I, I guess I'm still not understanding. So in that one scenario that Attorney Croc just mentioned, tree, tree subcommittee, which could consist of two council members and three residents, say, yes, let's take down that landmark tree. No objection, never comes before council. Is that correct?
That's correct.
Okay, I, I was hoping for a little more clarity on that and, and, and maybe some rewording to that. But based on the way it is, where am I? Based on the way it's worded now, I, I'm going to have a hard time supporting the scenario that was just laid out there to where we could have non-elected officials make a determination on an ordinance that it's our purview to, to make sure is being, um, employed.
Mayor Pro Tem Bavacqua.
Thank you, sir. Yeah, um, I've not been a big fan of the concept of the two or three. I preferred three.
Three council people?
Yes.
Councilmember Peterson.
Thank you, and, uh, thank you, Councilmember Sage, for bringing that up. I brought it up last time as well because we are the elected officials and whether we want to sit through discussion of tree issues that come before us because that is the public's right to come before the council. And it is our, you know, it's our duty to listen to everything that comes before us. That is before us regarding, um, our ordinances. I don't like that we are taking that away. I don't like that it could be one of three different things that could go ahead and cause an appeal, which could be city administration, it could be the person, or it could be somebody else, which I find that pretty odd as well. I do find that, you know, and I appreciate all the work that went into this. I just feel that when you take a group of seven people who are responsible for an ordinance and you break it down and you go into subcommittees, you don't get a full discussion on everyone's thoughts and ideas of this here. And that was the reason for keeping it at, you know, our city meetings to where the public can actually have seven people debate a subject, um, that's important to them, that actually goes against, you know, or could go against their private property rights, et cetera. Because that really hasn't been addressed in here at all. We have taken away like everyone's private property rights in here to do anything. And we're putting it at the hands of neighbors or whoever to make these decisions and, um, not right at the full council. Also, I do have a problem that we are now going to, you know, lump in the HOAs into this ordinance because every development that takes place has a master deed that controls what goes on in a development. So that, I don't want to get in the middle of those items either because anything that happens in an association like that can end up as a lien on the properties. And I would hate to see people innocently have things end up on liens on titles due to fees that are being charged and they have no, um, ramification whatsoever, especially the way we're separating it out into subcommittees. Because I can't imagine that any of us as an elected official would want to sit before a, a little committee made up of residences and only a handful of our elected officials to make decisions on the outcome that could cost them a lot of money. So, um, I think that, um, we, we had, the ordinance, we, ordinance that we've had in place has, you know, been a twofold thing. One, you wanted to document the way things have been handled under the current administration and, you know, have some history there for the future for people coming before them. And that's fine. But when you take something that, and break it down into this, um, this much detail, you kind of lose the whole value of what we started with. This still talks about, you know, um, the initial discussion was about saving our tree canopy. Well, definitely not saving it with this. And the cost, I mean, to like fifty dollar to go ahead and collect for a permit to still, still do your three trees every year. Well, there goes the three trees and, um, every month we have, you know, almost sixty trees disappearing out of our city up to about that. So, I mean, this isn't addressing any of that. This is still strong-arming everybody into going before somebody and, you know, that isn't even an elected official and having them dictate what's going to happen to their, their home, their property and everything else. So I, I, I truly think that we need some more work on this before it's even moved forward and, uh, that we take into consideration and look at, um, what some of these long-term ramifications are going to be, especially when you start messing with master deeds that have been put out there and those have all been approved for many years on how those developments are supposed to maintain themselves. So that's what I have for you right now. Thank you.
Uh, Councilmember Sage, a que, a comment, would, would it help if the language said it had to be three city council people on the?
Well, I wanted to clarify my position. I do support a tree subcommittee. I, I think it has great value, uh, and can assist both the city and council in making decisions going forward. I would only make the suggestion, to your point, Mayor, that it, it, that committee be comprised of three elected officials and two residents with a preference statement that does include an HOA. Yes, I, I think that is, um, that's very germane to the, to, to the discussion as well. I do support a tree subcommittee, yes.
The maker of the motion, is that acceptable?
Yes.
Councilmember Salvia.
Yes, I just wanted to, uh, clarify, you know, uh, several people have brought up, uh, the example of ZBA, zoning board of appeals. To me, the tree committee functions similar to that. They still make decisions, do they not, that, uh, reflect, uh, in accordance to our ordinances?
The ZBA actually does, uh, is your appeal process from the planning commission.
Right, so it's an appeal. It's an appeal, just like there, someone is appealing a landmark tree.
Right.
So to me, to me, they're very similar and I do support having three council members. And I still think it's, it's appropriate to have the input from the HOAs. They have a lot of trees on their property. And again, the whole goal of this, uh, group that was tasked to review this ordinance was to balance property owner rights as well as I'll, I call it our love for the tree canopy. So, you know, if this committee is sanctioned, there still is work to be done. We still need a metric that shows us where is our tree canopy. Whenever we're called to make a decision about a tree in our community, I feel like we have no data. You know, I don't know if by having one tree come down, that's going to cause, you know, Rochester to fall into disrepair because we've, you know, forever injured our tree canopy. Versus maybe our trees are growing at a faster rate, as well as we have funds in the tree fund that we haven't been spending. We need to plant trees, you know, trees die every year. So we need to get, um, there's a lot of work that needs to be done. So I think it's important that we move forward with this. Thank you.
Mayor Pro Tem Bavacqua.
Thank you.
You're on mute still. There you go.
I just wanted to second that as well. I, I, I think that there is a lot of work yet to be done. Just taking out, uh, uh, Councilmember, um, uh, Peterson's concerns regarding the landmark trees. At the very least, um, there's a lot of, uh, analysis and, um, decision-making that needs to happen in terms of how to move forward with any sort of, uh, tracking plan or something that's going to allow us to, to make these decisions in the future. And that has to be done somewhere. We've got people here that are willing to volunteer their time, that have a passion for it, both on the council and who are residents. It's going to allow, uh, us to take some work off of the shoulders of our administration so that they can focus on other things. So I think there's a great value to it, um, and regardless of the, uh, the, the landmark tree issue that, that, that Ms. Peterson's concerned about.
Councilmember Albrecht.
Uh, that, that's a good segue, Mayor Pro Tem Bavacqua. I, I reached out to, um, Mr. Banda earlier today because we've talked about, two thousand and nine, when the ordinance went into effect. There was a, we can go back and Google map and say, you know, X percent of Rochester is covered by tree canopy. So I asked the question, I would think, today, if we did that same Google map, and I asked this of, of Mr. Banda, if that percent was X, is it X plus Y now? Or do we have a, a bigger tree canopy? He thought the answer would be yes. But again, we don't know that. We, there is, there is software available and Nick has talked to all his tree experts and peers in the industry and it's a pretty daunting task to use that software. And then we can also go back to the manual, you know, laying out, uh, plots of maps and, and, and everything else with the Google Maps and, and do it manually. However, path we choose, um, we want to start somewhere. I mean, you know, early on when, and I have said this in, in previous meetings, when the, when the mayor, uh, appointed this committee, it weirdly was to focus on the landmark trees. But again, the five of us plus, uh, Councilmember, uh, uh, City Attorney Croc and, and Mr. Banda, we wanted to do more. We wanted to, as, as Councilmember Salvia said, we have these funds sitting there. Let's plant trees. Let's be able to come back to council officially every year and say, here's where we are today. We are at X percent. We probably planted two hundred and forty-three trees last year. We are now at Y percent. Here's what happened in turn, just give a report so there's full transparency, not only to council, but to all the residents on this. You know, we were singularly focused on these landmark trees over and over again, at least during my time on council. I, I, I can't speak to how many more of those issues were before that. And I know before I got elected, I came to a lot of meetings and there was a lot of talk about landmark trees. To turn this into a, a positive where we are, you know, we are a tree city. And I, I stated at the June twenty-second meeting, I want to be a tree city for the next twenty years, you know, like Rochester Hills has become. So, uh, to, 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 uh, council, to Mayor Pro Tem Bavacqua's statement, there's still more work to be done, but I think the work that's been done here, it should be, should be, uh, moved forward, uh, for first, for first reading.
There's a, uh, Mayor Pro Tem Bavacqua.
Yeah, just a quick comment too. We do have a drone that we've, we've talked about having, uh, putting into use in many different ways and it could be used to, uh, help with the, with the mapping and tracking.
I thought the drone was to keep an eye on the bad guys, no?
That too, it's multifaceted.
Councilmember Peterson.
Well, thank you, Mayor. So a couple of things. One, I know, um, Anthony, uh, and I both talked about, uh, one of the awesome programs that a Parks and Recs department already has that could actually, um, take into account, um, our tree canopy. However, tree, being Tree City USA doesn't mean that cities don't go in and clear cut their trees like Rochester Hills just did. And three air, three major areas just clear cut their whole entire property as being a Tree City USA. So, um, the Tree City USA has its, you know, you can have a warm fuzzy with it, or you can actually have an ordinance that doesn't allow for all this clear cutting that other communities have gotten away with that have a Tree City USA. Also, I would, um, as far as the landmark tree, I really didn't get into that discussion yet, but I will, um, now because the funds that you are talking about are funds from those that have been taken from homeowners, um, over the, over the landmark trees. And those still have not, we have not addressed the fact of what is, you know, being, how, uh, our own residents are being taken advantage of with this here and, and not given their private property rights to be able to do what they need to on their property without, without being charged, number one, when you're still allowing three trees to be taken down every year, which is part of a tree canopy. I mean, you can't have your cake and eat it too here. This is, this is one hundred percent, either you care about a tree canopy and you do things to prevent it, or you allow people to have their, do what they need to on their property that goes with just an ordinance that is laid out to where you're not going to gouge people for this here and then take that money, which you can't just take all that money because the way the ordinance is written, that money that has been collected gets to go back to the people. And if for anything that they go ahead and add to their property to replenish with. So it's not money for us to fully use, isn't that correct, Mr. Banda?
We, and we can use, they have one year to plant if they had, they put it in the tree fund. If they don't use it, that reverts to us. And then we should have that at zero. That was the committee's point, pushing it, trying to get a plan, correct?
Correct, but that the people who have paid into that are the ones who can get their money back.
For one year, correct?
Correct.
The current fund balance that is not, is not owed back to any resident is what?
About fifty thousand.
Yeah. Well, no, we actually collected more than that right now in just last year.
No.
You collected, you collected at least 30,000 last year that would go back to the residents.
Yeah, there is, that's right. There's a lot more than that in the front. So there's unallocated almost 50,000.
Right, there was 60,000 at one point. So the thing is though, there needs to be better bookkeeping on this here because talking about numbers that the dollars actually still belong to the homeowner and have a right to go back to that homeowner.
We have in the spreadsheet, I have a date, on that date that we know that money's unencumbered. So I've got that airtight.
Okay, so have you been in touch with any of these residents who have, were under the understanding that if they planted and did that, that they would get their money back? Have we been in touch with them?
They get a letter and it has a date on it. And they don't follow through. It's on them. We don't tell them to pay their taxes. We don't call them and say, pay your taxes every person.
And that, but this was something that, well, this I'll have to disagree with because that is no way to do this when we didn't have anything in place and it's just been a, you know, as we do it, that's how it takes place. So I think that we're doing our own residents a disservice by telling them one thing and not giving them the tools they need to be able to follow up and take care of those things when they are replanting on their property, knowing that they can do something to improve their property and get their money back. Because almost $9,000 is a lot of money. So.
But though, I know one you might be talking about, and they wrote me a letter saying, we're not going to plant on our own property. So they gave up their money.
Well, I do know the other ones have not, so.
We haven't cashed in.
Okay, so then the other thing in here is, just to, just touch on it is on the commercial side. So we've actually had some really bad developers come into town recently and actually just hack a bunch of trees up. Okay, that were over on other people's properties. And they are just getting away with it. You know, and it's, there's nothing that a homeowner can do. And we're, we're at this game again against the commercial developer against a residential. So we still don't have that at play either to protect the resident from that.
You want me to respond, Mr. Mayor?
Briefly.
So property, trees on adjacent properties, we'll, we'll have to disagree on this one, Councilmember Peterson. Their, their tree on the resident's side was well over the commercial side. They got a professional company to trim it and not kill it. And definitely looks a lot different, but that tree was encumbering on their property. And Attorney Croc and Wayne, that's a really ugly private property rights. You try to get the two people to work together when a tree overhangs another guy's property, but we, we were very aware of that, and we put the parties together, and they've got to come to some agreement, or one party will sue the other party for wrecking their tree. So that's a touchy one, but we, we were very aware of it and right in the middle of it. Hard to make them happy. I'm not saying it's a good thing, but I, I want to know, we were aware of it and tried to work it through the party.
So I, I brought it up again because of the fact that part of this ordinance needs to have something in there that, you know, if we have a tree subcommittee and we have, we need to have a solid outlet for people to be able to go to, to file a complaint when something like this happens because right now they may have gone in and used a tree cutting company to do this, but they actually built this building not even six inches up against this tree. Okay, these are just things that should not be taking place as we're talking about how to go ahead and be conscious with our tree canopy here in town. We also have to be mindful of the private property rights of the homeowners and the developers all in one thing. And, you know, this, we're not touching on the things that are important.
Councilmember Keith Lee.
Thank you, Mayor. I really appreciate the hard work and effort that the tree subcommittee has put into this ordinance revision. And I thought that Councilmember Peterson's point on the commercial portion of the ordinance would come up. And I'm wondering if that is a task, reviewing that portion of the ordinance is a task that the tree subcommittee could add to its, its list to investigate.
Good. Councilmember Albrecht.
Just responding to Councilmember Peterson and now Councilmember Keith Lee. In terms of a tree city being designated a tree city and the issue of clear cutting in Rochester Hills, I'm not going to focus on that, but we do, section 20.74 does clearly state clear cutting is prohibited and protective measures are required. That was in the ordinance. And in regards to the whole issue on commercial development, if you go still in that same section, when you go into the protective measures, we really didn't change a lot of that language in there. So the ordinance that has stood in place since 2009 still talks about land clearing, all trees being marked for removal. Before development, a tree removal permit is required. All the other things now, maybe it's not perfect, but that has, that has been in the ordinance that is already here and is unchanged in what you see before you in the ordinance we're, we're presenting tonight.
Mayor Protem Babacqua.
Yeah, I guess I just wanted to make a quick point that, you know, when these concerns do come up, it, it is something that we could send down to the subcommittee to kind of discuss and vet and, and understand and provide.
I think Mayor Protem is locking up.
Oh, boy.
We all feel his pain. Leanne, do we have any, anybody out here who's a resident and wants to speak on this? Or not?
I don't know. I don't think so.
Okay.
Jane?
I don't believe so. I didn't receive any prior correspondence and there are no resident phone calls in the meeting right now.
Thank you, Jane. And then Leanne, so this amendment is that the motion on the table is what it was, but with the subcommittee has to be, shall be three city council people, correct?
Correct.
Okay. I'd just like to say first.
Dean might be back.
What's that?
Dean might be back.
Dean, I'm sorry. I made a pro temp. You're back.
Yeah, I, I was just making a quick point that, that when issues come up like where there's concerns over things that, you know, don't, that seem to be outside of the ordinance or there's stuff happening that, that maybe we should be adjusting, that's something that could be sent out to the subcommittee to do an analysis on, figure out what's going on and provide a presentation to council without having to go through everything on a council level. So there's value there too, I guess is what I'm saying.
Good. So, so again, I just, I'd like to say thank you to the tree committee. Thank you for your hard work. You know, again, we started out just for the landmark trees and you guys did a great job going out and taking a very comprehensive look, which I think was desperately needed. I also want to thank the committee for taking the input from the HOAs and, you know, taking the time to include them. More input is better. So again, I appreciate that. And I think this, this is a great job. I will support this. You know, as we say, you know, all documents can be changed and looked at and it's, you know, it's a living document, but I think this is a great first start. So I will support this. So Madam Clerk, the role please.
Dixon.
Yes.
Babacqua.
Yes.
Albrecht.
Yes.
Keith Lee.
Yes.
Peterson.
No, because it takes away all private property rights.
Sage.
Yes.
Salvia.
Yes.
Very good. Thank you very much. Next on reports and regular businesses is the authorization of issuing pension bonds. Your city manager.
This is actually handled by Anthony and Nick.
Anthony.
Good evening, council. Yes, before you, this is the next step in the pension bond issuing process. I've included the memo, the resolution to authorize the issuing of the bonds. We are, or a bond. We are at the point where we've had the referendum period that's been expired. We can actually do the authorizing resolution, which is what's before you tonight. After that, we'll have the meeting with Treasury scheduled. Once we get approval from Treasury, the final plan with all the changes that they request and put into the comprehensive financial plan will then come back before council for final approval. And then at which point we can then move forward and issue the bonds. Happy to answer any questions if there are any. Nothing new has popped up. And we're just continuing on with our project timeline.
Thank you, Anthony. It's very complicated to borrow money these days. Maybe it always has been. Councilmember Albrecht.
I just wanted to thank both Anthony and Marcy for the work on this. I know we, I, I went on public record when this first came up several meetings ago that this really evens out our pension obligation in a very thoughtful and, you know, and so the ups and downs we, we saw. So I would like to make a motion to approve the resolution authorizing the pension obligation bond not to exceed $9 million.
For.
Motion by Councilmember Albrecht, support by Councilmember Peterson. Councilmember Salvia.
Yes, discussion on the motion. So just, you know, just to clarify, you know, the optics of, you know, we've got two motions tonight, you know, regarding debt. You know, this is a refinancing of existing debt, so we are not taking on new debt. This is refinancing existing debt and, and, and I'll forecast this should save the city quite a bit of money. So just wanted to readdress that because the optics don't look good when you look at the packet. Thank you.
Good. Thank you. Councilmember Sage.
And let me add to Councilmember Salvia's comments there. So it'd be very helpful, Anthony and City Manager Wayne, if we could have a recap of a schedule, if you will, of all the debt service that we incur based on these financial vehicles currently on our books and then, and those that are potentially proposed going forward. So that we have a better understanding in, in making certain decisions. Obviously, these two that we discussed tonight were critical. But it would be very helpful for us to have that kind of schedule for reference before the next meeting preferably.
Good. And just to work on what Councilmember Salvia said, this, this is kind of like, this, this, this one is like refinancing your house. It just makes a lot of sense for the city. We're not increasing our debt load. But I think this council is very aware of the debt load and we take that very seriously forward. Madam Clerk, Councilmember Peterson.
Yeah, I just wanted to say thank you as well to Anthony and Marcy and everyone on this here. This one, as Councilmember Salvia stated, yeah, it's just the redistribution to save us a lot of money, which you know, I don't like seeing two bonds in one night either. So just this here does help. I would also like, and Councilmember Sage's request, I would like to really know about the parking debt fund too in the future, so we can have that with that bond debt because like all this is important. There's, these are huge numbers that we are accountable for every year. So would be very helpful. But Anthony and Marcy and everyone, thank you very much for this here.
And, and the parking debt is certainly part of our debt. Mr. City Manager.
Yeah, I just want to just reiterate too that for this specific item, we actually had standardism, standard and poor actually evaluate the city and all of our obligation. And we did come out during the pandemic with a strongest rating that's possible, which is the triple A rating. Again, you know, that is knowing that we would have the drinking water and the revolving fund for the sanitary, so the SRF and the DWRF outstanding. Again, both water and sewer, and I'm, I'm sure I'm happy to sit down with finance and then come back with council to maybe even do a presentation because there's different funds. There's enterprise funds that are actually dedicated for the water and sewer. There's general funds which are dedicated for our pension, pension obligation as well as then our parking fund that's dedicated towards the, the parking debt. So let me work with the finance department and, and put together a presentation as well as a list of each of the obligations and where they're actually funded from.
Very good. And we are having a meeting of the parking committee coming up to, you know, talk about that and you know, we're triple A, I think that says it all, but at the same time, can't get crazy, right? So I think we all know that.
No, we're seeing lots of vacant signs everywhere, so.
Madam Clerk, the role please.
Dixon.
Yes.
Babacqua.
Yes.
Breck.
Yes.
Keith Lee.
Yes.
Peterson.
Yes.
Sage.
Yes.
Salvia.
Yes.
Thank you. Next we have a water and sewer rate study presentation from Raftalus. Is that how you say Raftalus? Raftalus. Welcome, gentlemen, and Mr. City Manager, do you want to?
Yeah, I think actually Sandy's, you know, drafted the memo and her along with the, the infrastructure committee. I, I know, and our finance and myself have spent a great deal of time. So I'll let Sandy kind of kick it off and then I know we have, I think, two representatives from Raftalus. And then I know there's some representatives from, from council that are on the infrastructure committee that will also want to comment too.
Andy.
Yep, thank you, City Manager. Essentially, the infrastructure committee has discussed the results of the rate study, which the city hired Raftalus to conduct. And after looking at many of our water and sewer funds and our, some of the obligations and the capital improvements that we would like to pursue in the future, we have been able to evaluate the rates and the infrastructure is recommending no rate increases for this current year, which would be September through August of 2021. And this would still allow the city to have, provide safe and reliable drinking water and sewage disposal systems while still fairly recovering the cost from usage. Once the the council approves, if we choose so, to not have any increases this year, I have confirmed with Attorney Croc that no resolution will be required. Just a motion that you would agree to no increases because the existing master fee schedule will actually just remain in place with no changes. So with that, I'd love for you to see the actual rate study and the results of that. And from Raftalus, we have Colin Drat on the screen right now, as well as it looks like Thomas Buckley is also on the call. So.
Well, Colin, welcome to the Rochester City Council. Go ahead.
Thank you. I'm going to share my screen here. Hold up.
There you go.
Yep, you're on. Good. Trying to arrange this other so I can still see everyone's faces. Which is like always, okay, I may not worry about. Okay, you can see it, which is good. Okay, well, of course, appreciate the time. We've worked, like all of us, the city administration as well as members of the infrastructure committee have been working very hard on taking a hard look at the water and sewer rates. So we're certainly excited to present the, the culmination of that and, and and what is from my perspective, and I think this is shared, is I think good news in terms of our water and sewer rates. And so I'm going to start the session off with agenda. So we'll look a little bit at what we're going to talk about tonight. So we'll start with a little background. This may be less for this group and more for anyone who may be watching, but just kind of a refresher on the history of the city's utilities as well as the funds. Because different terms will come up and different components of the structures and the funds that we'll kind of talk through. So the city administration thought it was, it would be valuable to do a little bit of a review or for those that aren't as, haven't spent as much time thinking about the topic as we have been spending. Just kind of help provide a little background. Go into a summary of our findings and recommendations, what we investigated and then what our recommendations are for the funds. And then next steps, some of which Sandy addressed. And then after that, we get kind of more into the details for the water and sewer funds. And look at the, the impacts on, on the bills at the end. So to provide a little background, the city has two water systems. The west side of the city is primarily served by wells and the eastern side is primarily those, those residents are served by our Great Lakes Water Authority, water, and a VAS Shelby Township. So you kind of see the history of, of how that east side service came about. so you kind of see the history of, of, of how that east side service came about. Um, essentially, you know, that, that happened around, you know, kind of in the 1980s. And essentially at this point, um, that system with the west side receiving well water and the east side receiving Gleewa water via Shelby Township is, um, kind of the system we've got. And it, while it's probably possible, um, to, uh, to, to change that, it is not really feasible or any cost prohibitive. So, um, the bottom line on the two systems as, as we understand it in the current discussions is, um, the systems, the, the two system approach is, is the, um, kind of most cost effective way to deliver water service to, uh, residents.
Yeah, I don't, I don't, I don't think we're going to away from that system anytime soon. I think that's pretty clear.
Right. And that is, I know just in talking with administration, that is a, um, that is a question that, that comes up sometimes if, if you're on one side or the other, mostly on the east side and it will, is it possible to get well water and it's, um, it's far more complicated than just, can I just switch services like it's a, you know, cable service or something like that? Um, so that's a point we definitely wanted to make. Um, looking at the fund structure, um, there's two primary funds for the water and sewer utilities. Five ninety-two, which relates to operating costs. So we're talking about the, the day-to-day cost of operating utilities. Um, largest of those are personnel. So folks working on the water and sewer systems, keeping everything running. Um, buying the Great Lakes Water Authority water from Shelby, yeah, Shelby Township, well as sewer treatment, um, sewage treatment service. On, um, the capital side, we have the four eighty-eight funds for water and sewer, which are the infrastructures funds. So there we're really talking about um, repair and replacement of our water and sewer infrastructure. So capital costs. So when you see those funds kind of come up again, this is just to kind of aid in that five ninety-two is the operating, um, the cost of getting the water, um, as well as purchasing the sewer treatment service, four eighty-eight is, is the capital really kind of replacing the infrastructure. Um, just wanted to provide a little context on the structure of the costs themselves. Um, since we have to purchase, um, at least, uh, we have to purchase water as well as sewage treatment service, although we do treat our own water on the well side. Um, what that means is that a lot of our costs are not directly under our control. Um, now there are things that we can do to mitigate those costs and we talked about that and we'll talk about that in a minute. Um, but it is important for folks to realize that, um, a lot of the costs that are incurred to provide utility service, um, come from purchasing water and sewage treatment service from third-party providers. The other thing to keep in mind is that most of our costs are not dependent on how much water a customer actually uses. So of course on the, on the east side, we do have to buy the water. Um, so there's some variable costs there. Um, but most of the cost, the city encourages to provide water and sewer service is related to making service available, having the infrastructure in the ground, provide the service to, um, the customers. And sometimes that can be, seem a little counterintuitive because you think, well, the less I use, less it costs to actually provide the service, but most of the costs are actually just relating to this kind of readiness to serve concept to, to kind of having the system in place to provide service whenever you turn on the tap as opposed to, um, kind of going up and down as you use more or less water. Um, in terms of our rate structure, we've got two charges. So there's a, um, two types of charges, I should say. There's a usage charge, which is, uh, based on the amount of water a, uh, customer uses in a quarter. We have a ready to serve charge, which is fixed per quarter regardless of how much water is used. On the usage charge, um, that's billed based on the number of hundred cubic feet. And, um, for those that aren't familiar or have trouble picturing what a hundred cubic feet might look like, and, um, I'm certainly in that group. That's seven hundred forty-eight gallons. Um, the average resident, when we looked at it, uses about thirty CCF per quarter. It's to twenty-two thousand four hundred forty gallons, about sixty-two gallons per person for a four-person household. The thing to keep in mind there is, well, it seems like a lot of water that does, it's really all of the uses of water. So clothes washing, dishwashing and a big use for a lot of folks, especially in the dry hot summer is, um, lawn watering. Um, so it's, sometimes you think, well, geez, I don't drink that much, but there actually are a lot of uses of water and people really do use a lot more than they think. Um, on the ready to, ready to serve charge, that really is intended to recover the cost of making system available, water and sewer system available to customers 24 hours a day, seven days a week, three hundred sixty-five days a year. So you turn on the tap or flush the toilet, the system is there. Um, that infrastructure is, is there and essentially basically we, we have to, um, have to maintain it and keep it ready to provide that service. Um, basically constantly. Um, and it really, it can't, we can't construct it as people need it. So there's a large fixed cost to making that, that service available. And, um, that's what that ready to serve charge is intended to recover. This is a picture of a bill. Um, I just wanted to note on the back of the bill is some of those codes that, that relate to some of the things I just talked about. Do you have those, those two at the top, the water and sewer, um, usage charges? So that's the per CCF charge. Um, that really relates to how much water, um, folks use and we, in, in the city, we build for sewer, uh, water usage. And then the bottom here, you see the infrastructure charges. So there's a, there's a usage component to the infrastructure charge as well as a, as a fixed component. And then the readiness to serve here. So really these ones that say usage, those are billed on a per CCF basis. These ones that say fixed, those are billed, um, on a dollar per quarter basis regardless of how much is used. Then the other distinction is, um, the, the cost for the infrastructure fund, actually the, the capital cost of, of, um, having what, you know, dealing, pairing and replacing water and sewer infrastructure, those are really captured and recovered by these infrastructure charges. And then the operating costs are, are recovered by these water usage and ready to serve. So this is just another way of looking at that same thing. Um, it's my understanding that if you pay your bill, um, electronically, um, you'll see a bill details kind of image that looks something like this. It doesn't have the colors. Um, just another way of looking at that same thing. You see the usage charges here that are CCF and ready to serve per quarter as well as the usage component of the infrastructure charge and the, and the flat, it's called flat component here. That's the, the fixed charge. So costs kind of above on this bill are related to operation and maintenance and the costs below are primarily related to, um, infrastructure repair and replacement. So just kind of a breakdown when, um, when you're looking at that bill, what those things mean. So during the rate study process, we focused on two questions. Um, and the first is, are our current revenue levels adequate to fund the continued provision of safe and reliable water service? So that really fills with that we have enough revenue now to continue to operate and maintain the water and sewer systems as well as repair and replace, do the repair and replacements to, uh, water and sewer infrastructure. Um, to ensure that we're able to continue to provide the level of service that our, uh, customers need and, and expect. Second question relates to the structure itself, which is really, is it, um, is it fair in the sense is, does it recover revenue from customers in proportion to the cost that caused the city to incur? So that, so that first question is really dealing with at a global level, um, we have enough revenue coming in to do what we need to do. And the second question is, um, we recover that revenue, um, fairly from our, our different types of customers. So on this slide, we've got our findings. Um, I think they're generally, they're both good news. The first one is that, um, we believe that our current revenue, revenue levels are adequate. Um, at least through next year. Um, which means that as, um, Sandy mentioned at the outset, we are not recommending any adjustments to, um, rates. I know typically we make those effective on September one of each year. Um, we think that based on where, where everything is now and, and having all the costs in there and doing our projections, uh, we believe that, um, we do not need to make an adjustment this year. Um, with respect to the second question, is the structure fair? Uh, we believe that it generally is, um, but that there are some modest changes that could be made, um, to kind of improve the equity of, of the rates and improve the alignment between the way the revenues are recovered and the, and the way the costs are incurred. There you see the recommendations, um, just reiterating that, um, we believe we do not need an adjustment this year. So that's from September 2020 through August of next year. Even following that, our, our rates are generally, um, in a good place. And we're really looking at, um, less something substantial changes on the, on the capital needs side. Um, modest adjustments in, in future years is needed to keep revenues in line with costs. Of course, um, it, you know, we heard a lot about the history, um, in talking with city administration in terms of our efforts to control and reduce our costs. Um, and, and we think that that's, there's, that's certainly a worthwhile, um, thing to continue to evaluate ways that we can save money, um, and, and mitigate cost increases. And, uh, we certainly have a long history of that. You know, there are different things that we've examined, um, that didn't turn out to be feasible in the end in terms of the possible to have additional wells to provide well service to more customers, um, treating sewage versus purchasing it. Um, then are there ways to, uh, reduce our purchase water costs, especially it's really relates to those on the east side that receive, um, it likes water authority water. So that's something that, um, staff has been evaluating and their conversations being had with, uh, Shelby Township, looking at ways to, um, potentially reduce our peak demand, um, which would help out with the charges from Gleewa that end up being passed on to the, the customers on the east side. Um, so a big component of the cost that we pay from, um, Shelby, which is essentially a pass through of, of, of the cost from Gleewa is related to our peak demand. Um, so to the extent that we can reduce that peak demand, that would have a positive impact on our costs. So this is kind of the, um, the bottom line for the average customer. Um, this is also on the infographic that was included in the packet. Um, no change on September one of this year, as we talked about. And then really, uh, uh, after that, it's what I would consider to be relatively modest changes. I mean, these are, these are, this is the increase per quarter. So on the well side where, um, rates are lower due to the lower cost of producing the water, um, we're looking at, you know, dollar ninety-one per quarter next year. And on the, um, on the Gleewa side, it's eight eighty-eight per quarter. Um, but the thing to keep in mind is that bill is higher to begin with, and most of that is related to the higher cost of, um, actually purchasing the water. So even on a percentage basis, I mean, we're kind of looking at, um, all told, you know, what I would consider to be more inflationary increases. Um, these obviously aren't set in stone. City staff will, will evaluate the need, um, for adjustments each year as they, as they historically have. Um, this is just based on what we know now. This looks like what we may need. Um, so I think, you know, generally speaking, I think we've got good news in, in terms of the rates. And this is kind of the bottom line with respect to that average customer. Terms of next steps, um, got public engagement efforts to communicate study results. Um, so that includes materials being posted to the city website. Um, I know we've had town hall meetings in the past with respect to rates, uh, postings on social media and, um, providing information through customer bills. And then, as we mentioned, we don't see a need for a rate adjustment this year. Um, and, and city administration will, will evaluate the need, um, for an adjustment next year. Um, should have, you know, as, as time goes on, we have more visibility into our capital needs. Um, so we'll, we'll know more, um, in terms of what we need, I think, um, even later this year. Um, based on what we know now, it looked like we're in pretty good shape in terms of the level of rates. Um, the other kind of question mark is the longer term impact of, of COVID-19 on, um, on commercial usage especially. Just kind of how long that goes on and how that might impact our customer usage patterns. Um, the other thing I would note is that, um, we've provided city staff with, um, a rate model and Excel that they can use to, um, evaluate rates in the future.
Uh, Colin, before you move on, I, I think this might be a good, a good point to kind of pause the, the rest of your presentation, which is actually in the packet. There's about another 30 pages of the detail. Um, really this is kind of the, the higher broad point. So I don't know if there's any questions that, that council members or the infrastructure might want to jump in, uh, you know, I know there's, you know, we, we spent nearly, uh, nine months going through a, a lot of information, a lot of Excel sheets. Again, with our finance department, public works department as well as our consultants, um. So I don't know if there's anybody.
Questions, anybody?
Yeah.
Uh, anybody from the, I can't see everybody. So maybe you need to take that off your screen. Thank you. Uh, councilmember Salvia.
Thank you. And I do want to hear from the, the other council members on this because we have had several bites at this apple and reviewed it several times. It's great work. Um, it gives me a great level of, uh, confidence as a, as a resident first, a council member, you know, are our rates fair? Um, you know, we all had that surprise when our rates changed. And, you know, I thought, you know, we had started a manufacturing plant in my basement because our rates and our water bill jumped up so much. And so as a council member, I never wanted to see that on my watch. So one of the things that we learned from this study and what our goal was is to have stable rates where just as Colin presented, we're forecasting just inflationary rates going forward and no surprises. Nobody wants a surprise in their water bill as well as it gives us confidence. Um, if you look at, uh, the fund balances that we're agreeing to in this policy is that we've included the major expense that we've, we talked about bonding and approved to bond tonight for the DWRF project. That's all baked into this rate study. So that's all in there and that's the major expenses that we're looking, we're looking at. So it, it gives me a great level of confidence that our rates, even though we have a complicated system, two different water systems, um, we are in a good place, uh, with our waters.
Councilmember Albrecht.
I defer to councilmember, uh, Salvia on this because she is the, uh, the senior member of this committee and really, uh, uh, did it. I nominated her as chair of the committee, but, uh, but, um, seriously, the, uh, the work that was done by Raftalus, um, and, and as, as councilmember Salvia said, we went over this several times, much like the tree committee. We had bi-weekly infrastructure committee meetings just to go over this and look at the illustrations, how we communicate this. And in prior meetings, both councilmember Salvia and I have said, you know, this is great news. I mean, normally you bring in consultants and you know, rates go up or, you know, they find new things in here. And, and this was a, a great partnership between city administration and a consultant and, um, and, uh, Sandy and her team kept us really up to date on all the, the changes. We had input. Uh, the citizen member of the infrastructure committee did a great job of bringing up things that we didn't think of. So, uh, uh, so I'm, I'm pleased where we're at right now. And I, 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 I hope our residents, uh, will see the, the transparency in the bills. How the difference between me being, you know, uh, Gleewa customer versus, um, others, uh, being on, uh, the, the city wells, uh, that that's out of our, our control. A lot of these costs are, are out of our control and, and, uh, we, they're almost like pass-throughs. We have a, we have a city that is very old. So the infrastructure, we have to be visionary and looking ahead and, and this study did that and administration did that. So, um, I, I'm very pleased with the work that's been done. And, and again, like, like what we talked about the tree committee, there's still much more work to be done, uh, as, as this goes forward. Uh, um, but I think residents should be very happy that there'll be no rate increase this year. I heard this. I know councilmember, uh, Keakley, when she was walking around campaigning, this was issue number one with a bullet on everything I heard. So thank you for all your work on this.
Councilmember Sage.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. And I want to concur with my colleagues. Um, we have a lot of studies done for, on, you know, behalf of the city. And this is one that, um, I know will not sit on the back of a shelf, uh, somewhere behind someone's desk. Uh, this is a living document and. Somewhere behind someone's desk. This is a living document and it actually. Confirms for us some of the planning we've done previously. Previous to this council and a council before that. Going forward. And I think it does provide a nice path forward with an understanding that we can manage the costs. Down to an inflationary rate. Given the safeguards we've put in financially to the infrastructure to this system. I applaud Raftellus for this work and I know I'm going to find it very helpful going forward. Again, I appreciate the efforts.
Very good. Further comments from council?
Mayor.
Councilmember Peterson.
I heard someone else speak, though.
Councilmember Salvia, did you have?
No, it was me.
Sorry, councilmember. City Clerk O'Connor.
Just for historical purposes, when council's done with the discussion, could we have a motion to put in the minutes that the report was received and then that? That makes a good reference point for people who are looking for this information ten, twenty years down the road.
Is anybody really going to be looking at this?
Yes, you'd be surprised.
On this topic, yes.
That's a good point. Thank you. Councilmember Peterson.
Yes, thank you. And I want to thank the new company Raftellus for the work they've put into this as well. Sitting on infrastructure in the past and all the discussions and all the work that we put into trying to. You know, stay on top of this and the grants that were put into place for the DWRF and all of that to help actually. You know. Take care of the community in a better fashion as well. Were all strong moves that we had to make, unfortunately. I do hope that I would like two things. One, have we found out if we are still the highest water usage in the area? And two, is there a way that we can actually put together a water conservation program to. Stop some of this excessive use of water. You know, so we can actually preserve some of this and I guess it will just help educate the public that. You know, all this water that you're using isn't helping us. It's actually driving the rates right up, so.
Yeah, I don't know if Colin wants to pull up, but actually on figure twenty-nine, which is on page twenty-seven of their. Report. Raftellus actually did a sewer bill comparison, and then there's the water rate, and then there's the combination rate. So that that information actually is there. We're about in the middle, if I were to just kind of summarize. But that information is is in there. And I'm sorry, what was?
Conservation.
Conservation. So there are recommendations as well that Raftellus did put into in their report. As well as ideas that came out of the infrastructure committee and through staff. On the conservation. So those are some ongoing components for conservation that. I hope really that council will consider as we move forward.
Good. Any further comments?
The only other one I would say, Mayor, is other than the report, there is actually an infographic. As well as a draft FAQ. Again, in the packet, and those are on pages like thirty-eight and, sorry, one thirty-eight and one forty. As well as the full report. We are going to put all of this information on the city's website. And as Colin pointed out, there's going to be an overall informational campaign. That Jane, along with our public works and finance, will be rolling out. Really over the next year as we explain that these new rates are in place.
Very good. Yeah, I just I just like to say, also, I appreciate the survey. Very good news. Usually when a water consultant has come here in the past, we've gotten outrageous water rate increases, at least in my opinion. So this is good. I think it's a good plan, as they say, as I think councilmember Salvia says, it shows where we're going. There's no surprises. It's very clear. So I think that's good news and it's very good to have a plan going forward. So do we have a motion to accept this?
Sure, a motion to accept the Raftellus water and sewer rate study.
Support.
Motion by councilmember Salvia, support by councilmember Peterson. Anything further? Madam Clerk, the role, please.
Lane had something.
I don't know if you want to have a separate motion, but there also needs to be a motion to approve the no increases. To the water and sewer rates. That could be a separate motion, but I didn't know if that wanted to be included.
Councilmember Salvia, do you want to make that a combined?
Sure, I'll make it a combined motion. No water and sewer rate increases.
Councilmember Peterson, are you okay with that?
Yes, as long as it's clear enough for the city clerk.
Yes.
Okay.
All right, madam. Madam Clerk, the role, please.
Dixon?
Yes.
Bavacqua?
Yes.
Albrecht?
Absolutely, yes.
Peterson?
Yes.
Sage?
Yes.
Salvia?
Yes.
Very good. Thank you, and thank you for coming tonight and for your work on your presentation.
Thank you, Colin.
Thank you, Colin.
Thanks, it's been a pleasure.
See you soon, right? All right, next we're onto the Public Works Campus Update. Sandy, riding my bike by, it looks like it's coming quite nicely.
Indeed, it is. Our building is moving right along right now. And thankfully, good news, we're still on our same substantial completion date for our campus update for the end of the year. And we are within our contingency budget right now still as well. Right now, we've we have a net total use of one hundred and sixty-nine thousand, two hundred and sixty-eight dollars of the two hundred thousand dollar contingency fund. So the building is moving along as far as the administration building goes. Unfortunately, some of our supply chains have been severely interrupted because of the COVID. So many shutdowns and a lot of the supplies that were bid to be put into our building last fall, unfortunately. Are no longer available or they're months and months away. So instead, administration has been working with our contractor and our engineers. To approve different florings. I mean, we've just been doing everything we can to get the same comparable supplies and. Materials for our buildings. We also have some wood issues on the salt barn. They can't get that same wood. So again, we're doing studies. We're working with them as much as we possibly can. To get the same product in a reasonable timeframe. So those things right there, unfortunately, put our building. Like when we can move into the building back another week. So we're looking at hopefully the third week of September, we'll be moving in there, starting to. Process all of our items of furniture over to the building. And having that ribbon cutting come toward the end of September. So to be determined right now, unfortunately, we're still under one delay on a major product, so. That's why we can't actually set it right now because it's a little bit up in the air and, you know, we'd like to make sure it's it's done. So we can get in there. But I have the brief presentation on the PowerPoint. Let me share my screen real quick, so. I can show you that and. Okay. Yeah, right now.
Yep.
Yes, okay. So on our administration building, we have our sign up. We actually with our logo of where you live in the Department of Public Works, it's just been temporarily adhered to the building right now. As we're just kind of gauging some of the colors and the signage on it, but it really starts to bring the building back and look like home. In our entryway up front in our lobby, we finally have our glass entryway. It's a little dirty right now. They're working on cleaning up some of the items, but it really sets it off in terms of an entryway to the building. Our lobby area is slowly but subtly, everything in our building has been primed already, and they've painted just about half of the building. They. Worked trying to get caught up last week on that, so it's starting to take shape. In our lunchroom and throughout the entire building, we have our ceiling tiles being installed in the building. And as you can see here, look, we have a hallway. It actually looks like an office hallway now, and it's again, all the lighting's in, the HVAC systems are in, the plumbing is in. And our concrete floors have been polished, which when our engineers suggested this during the bidding phase, we were kind of. Asking about it and looking to see some samples. So the first picture on the left is actually plain concrete that's got the dust and everything all over it. And a company came in and they actually polished it to bring the aggregate out. And then they put their coating over it. It creates this. Really durable surface, and this is throughout wherever our outside staff or field staff will be coming into the building. So this is their main travel pass. That we have this durable surface in there. So it has actually turned out it's really sharp and very excited about the flooring of that. In our car wash bay, we have our flooring in. We've got our heaters in. They're patching up all of our walls. They put the ventilation system in, so. This is just about near completion right now. I think one of the items we're working on right now is. The hard water component and how that could affect our trucks. But some of the estimates are coming in a little higher than we'd like to see right now, so I don't know. We're still doing some evaluation with our engineers to find the most economical solution to this. Although you'll see in my contingency line items, I did include thirteen thousand dollars for a water softener to go in this bay. But again, we. Kind of feel like we can find a better, more economical solution and are awaiting that, but I didn't want to overlook that cost as a potential of something we could incur. We actually have our first course of asphalt all on our drive right now. So once again, things are starting to look real cleaned up in there. And probably later this week, they're anticipating to come back and start doing some of the other mill and fill areas. And then when the larger construction vehicles are done utilizing our site. We will have the final course of asphalt put on that looks like one complete seamless. Drive area and it looks new and is unimpacted by any of the vehicles.
Wrong way.
Wrong way, yeah. Our ecology drop-off center has been excavated. This is the area where our residents will be able to. Bring some of kind of like their dial of dumps or ecology drop-offs where they brought their larger items and so forth for disposal. This has actually been finished off. I think as of today, the walls are actually dug in and they were starting on the concrete walls that go in the back. So we anticipate seeing that get completed over the next few weeks. In terms of the contingencies, our previous expense balances and cost savings are all there. And some of the new. Costs that we've incurred and were a few of the asphalt changes. Because the fourth item down, the storm pipe replacement during the paving, we. Recognized that one of our storm pipe structures had been damaged and then it actually part of it collapsed. So we. Used our D W staff to do the excavation, save on the cost. And we did have to pay the contractor for some of the materials and their labor, but again, very minimal cost. But in doing that. We actually brought some of the pavement up toward the garage a little bit more, which was a six thousand, one hundred and ninety-five dollar change order. Merritt Fiber has given us their proposals to bring that in. One of their items included them installing a handhole box outside of the administration building. And because they were projecting to do that after asphalt was done, they wanted to drill into the new asphalt. So in lieu of that, we actually paid our own contractor five hundred dollars to do that work. Before the asphalt went in, and we were able to remove that cost from Merritt Fiber contract and were awaiting them to begin that aspect of the project. On the north garage, which is where the car wash bay is. We are going to be painting the other portion, the existing portion of the garage. A green color to match the new car wash bay, match the administration bay, kind of give it a much better feel for a cohesive visual within. As well as that'll help protect that roof a little bit more. It doesn't need to be replaced. There are no. There's no damage to that roof. We believe the painting will give it the things that it needs. One last item that we incurred is just over five thousand dollars on our south garage. We had the new garage door put in. But that was the door we're going to be using with our new large vehicle hoist, which meant some of the larger, heavier vehicles could potentially be waiting on the apron just outside the garage door. Instead of impacting our brand new asphalt, we actually had a concrete apron put in, and we had some larger bollards put in, which matched the rest of the bollards. But it's also to protect the building. So some of these were some of the safety features that just became critical to the project that we, as we evaluated, we put them in there to protect our infrastructure. One of the other savings that we achieved was a thousand dollar credit for the flagpole. We worked directly with the contractor and were able to. Save on some of the labor costs of having that installed. I mentioned for their future costs, we have the some plumbing and water softener changes we could potentially incur. I'm not quite sure where that'll fall. And the other one is some. Free electric changes that we need to have put in the south garage to support the new hoists that are actually awaiting installation. We're waiting on our engineers to finalize some electric studies and some load studies on our panels. As well as working with DTE to see what other options we have. Right now, we're projecting it to be a ten thousand dollar cost, but it is very unknown at this point. So even with the additional costs that we have, all in our expenses. Including those that are estimated, total two hundred and thirteen thousand dollars and. Two hundred and thirteen thousand and twelve dollars, but with the cost savings of almost forty-four thousand. We've only used the hundred and sixty-nine thousand, two hundred and sixty of the contingencies, leaving us approximately thirty thousand, seven hundred and thirty-two dollars left. In our contingency fund. So there's. Happy to have that in there. We still just have that little bit of room. We believe that we'll be able to keep that within the budget. And again, we're exploring every opportunity we can to find the cost savings as we can. So with our schedule, as we said, our previous occupancy prior to COVID was early August. Now we're looking at mid to late September. But our substantial completion date remains the end of the calendar year. And we hope to have that ribbon cutting ceremony the end of September. So. I'm so happy. Things are definitely moving along. We're evaluating things like furniture now and starting to really look forward to starting to pack. I mean, not, most people don't want to pack, but we're excited because we can start going through our piles, starting things together and looking forward to those. So if you have any questions, I'm happy to answer those.
Thank you, Sandy. Councilmember Salvia.
Yeah, Sandy, could you just clarify, when we started down this journey, we. Since we're talking about bonding a lot tonight, we bonded for five point three million for facilities, and then we let this bid. For just under three point seven million. So when you're talking about the contingencies, is that included in that three point seven million?
Yes, it is. That is actually included within that bid that came from Rewald and Sons.
Okay, and then also I was reviewing it, and we had a contingency for solar panels. What happened?
They are still working on it, but that was actually included within their bid. So those have been delayed. They should be going up. We have all these systems put in already within our plumbing. And HVAC rooms that we have in the building, just awaiting for the actual panels to come in. So, and I believe on our last presentation, I also had to mention that that word soil, if you notice, I didn't have to mention that tonight. We actually were able to take that off of our expected contingency cost because we were able to work on disposal of that and kind of. Use some of that dirt around our site. So yay, no dirt.
Anything further, council? Mayor Protem Bavacqua.
Thanks, Sandy. You mentioned something about the temporary signage on the front of the building. I did I did see that it looked like maybe. Contractor dropped something on the sign. There were some letters askew. What's going on with that?
Yep, exactly. Just because of the way that they were adhered, as we were double checking some of the colors and things like that. Indeed, we during the irrigation installation, because of the way the letters were adhered to the building, just one little knock and now our. From the of is hanging down. That is actually on the contractor's list of things to be taken care of in the next week.
Okay, thanks.
Further, okay. Thank you, Sandy. Good luck with that.
Thank you.
Your next receiver report from the various boards of commission is first report from the planning commission, Mayor Protem Bavacqua.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. We really only looked at one item. Many of you traveling around town may have noticed that the BP gas station on the corner of University and Main has. Has got a facade renovation going. Once they, that had been approved by planning commission and once they kind of got into the project. They found some rot on the structural element of the of the building. Which didn't allow them to. Build the facade that they had planned, so they had to come back to planning commission for a site plan revision, which was approved and they're moving forward. And that was about it. Unless Nick or anyone else remembers anything else that happened at that meeting, but that was the only item.
Okay, very good. Thank you. Next is a report from the Paint Creek Trailways Commission, councilmember Sage.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. So we spoke, I think, last meeting regarding the assistance that the Vanguard chapter of Michigan Trout Unlimited. Assisted the city with breaking up that log jam in the bridge there by Dinosaur Hill Nature Preserve. So during this meeting. They actually informed us that they got a grant from their National Trout Unlimited. Organization and. We have now approved and given them or granted them access to access the Paint Creek via our property, so that they can construct. Instream fish habitat structures. So it's been an ongoing project that they've done throughout other pieces of. So it's been an ongoing project that they've done throughout other pieces of of the creek. And and this one will begin this year and then continue into next year. And it runs from Tinkin down to Dinosaur Hill Nature Preserve. So we're very excited about that and hopefully I'll be able to give you some more updates regarding that project in the future.
Thank you, Councilmember Albert.
As Councilmember Sage knows, I, as I was, I walked the Paint Creek Trail and I send him pictures of things that I think are very cool. And I don't know, it's somewhere between mile marker thirty three point five and thirty four point five. They put it, there was this pole going in the air. It almost looked like a solar panel. Then they've installed this, like the things you see at the zoo where you press the button and it starts talking about. And it talks about the history of the Paint Creek Trail. There's a picture of a trout on there. They've put a bench across there right, right after that bridge they rebuilt.
Right after the new bridge.
Yeah, it's really cool. And you know, I, I, I just compliment the work that the Paint Creek Trailways Commission's been doing because, you know, I, I don't drive as fast as the mayor does on his bike or or Councilmember Salvia. I walk slowly, so I stop and see all these things. So great job.
Thank you. Mr. City Manager, is there, does everybody else hear that beeping?
Yep.
Is that?
Yeah, I would just recommend everybody just hit mute if you're not on, not speaking.
Thank you. Next, we have a report from the Downtown Development Authority, Councilmember Peterson.
Thank you, Mayor. So there was, as everyone has seen, the outdoor dining platforms have been a hit downtown. They had final placements of those put out for those that had requested those. Also, there was a rebate coming from Dillman and Upton for some of the costs on that as well. They also, that outdoor seating mini grant that they have, they've had some mini grant applications come about for La Pumas and Penn Station, some of the smaller businesses, so they can have more outdoor dining options. And there was discussion regarding downtown events, the fall events, the Halloween and some of the holiday events. Right now Christie's been working with the chief and those are, you know, if there are to be any, they're going to be based on what the chief does communicate with Christie. So still hope for some, but we'll see what happens in the future. And that was about the most of that meeting. Thanks, Mayor.
Thank you. Next, we have a report from the Infrastructure Committee. I know we've heard some of that tonight, but Councilmember Salvia.
Sure. Yeah, you're right. We have talked a lot about infrastructure. But just a couple of things. One, I just want to keep everyone aware. We still are reviewing the safety grant for Romeo and Maine. So if some of you remember, we were looking to straighten the, I call it the Dairy Queen intersection. To me, it's a very uncomfortable intersection. But I think we all want to be familiar with it because we, it would be a significant change to that intersection to increase safety as well as resolve some underground issues that we have there. So that discussion will be coming to council, I would say, in some point in the near future. And then also, I really wanted to clarify a comment made by Ref Telus in terms of peak demand usage on the Gleewa side. And City Manager, I know you've had some discussions with Shelby. But one of the comments that they made was, we represent, our peak demand is ten percent of their total peak demand. So if we turned off our peak demand, we went to zero, it would not likely affect the rate that Shelby gets for the water that we then buy from Shelby. So my takeaway from this study is that we need to continue to look for ways to get a direct connection to Gleewa. And I know there might be some opportunities coming, but City Manager, is that your understanding as well that we're ten percent? So if we go to zero, we're not really moving the needle?
We would move the needle slightly, but ten percent is ten percent. So it's not substantial.
And that's if we go to zero.
Correct. So we, you know, we did have a conversation with Shelby's Public Works Director and it was Anthony and our Public Works, Sandy and myself, talking with, you know, kind of some different options and scenarios. And, you know, clearly they would need to hopefully also change their peak. It was very significant to look if both of our communities actually one hundred percent reduced it. It was almost ten million dollars, a very, very substantial amount. If, even if we reduced it by half, it can make a big impact. But right now, they, similar to us, only have a voluntary, you know, kind of encouraging residents not to be using the water at the peak periods. We all are also looking at alternatives due to how the calculations from the Great Lakes Water Authority. It could end up unfortunately being more due to the elevation of the city and the distance compared to where Shelby's at. However, again, that's something that we can continue to to look at and see where the Great Lakes Water Authority, where we could potentially have a plug in. It might end up even being on one of the sides with where Rochester Hills is at, that we would connect up. So that definitely will be something that we will continue to look at is having a direct connection and kind of costing out that, that option. And as well as working with with Shelby where we're getting our water now to see what, what options are available to reduce our cost. There were some other, you know, concerns about pressure. And so we have built into this study, you know, pumping stations and some other options that could dramatically improve the water pressure. And that would be so that in the homes, people would actually have a higher pressure as well as for fire flow, in case there happens to be a fire, that the water pressure wouldn't drop. So there are some really good stuff really in this, this study. And there's work for us to do with Public Works and Finance.
Good. Thank you.
Very good. Mayor Protem.
I had heard something about a line from Lake Huron or something a while back. Is there anything ever developed with that or? Anybody know anything on that?
Yeah, so that that's still a potential. And I'll note, I guess, when I was out in the Chicago area, the community that I was working for, Displanes, actually was a part of a connection all the way to Evanston. And that was, that that community was actually breaking away from the Chicago water system because we were seeing a fifty cent increase every year. And it actually made sense to actually build a different pipeline. So that is been discussed through, you know, McComb and looking at the Lake St. Clair water actually coming across. So that that is also another alternative that we're investigating.
Thanks. We've been investigating these things for a long time. I hope, I hope something comes through.
Yeah, well, we've checked off the the wells, you know, we, we had three that we tried and all those would not have, you know, some, I think all of them, those three were dry. And the ones that we have now would not be able to produce enough water for the whole system. So as we go through, we, you know, we investigate and check off items.
Very good. Next, new business to refer on miscellaneous, Mr. City Manager.
I just have, if I can do the check report first and then go through that. We, we have the report from August thirteenth.
I'm sorry, yes.
Yep. Yeah. And then for my managers' updates, just a few things to highlight. This upcoming September nineteenth, we'll be having our next Clinton River cleanup. That's on a Saturday from nine AM until eleven thirty. One of our consultants from DLZ, along with our Public Works, Jason Dickinson, our superintendent, is is planning that event and there's information on the back page. That's on page one seventy three of this council packet. And we'll have additional information to get volunteers. Again, we've already worked with and they've done, the Clinton River Group has done other cleanups. And that, that's able to be done by passing out bags and socially and physically distancing people and then coordinating the pickup. Highlight, I want to again, highlight that we've done two meetings with our community in regards to the galvanize service that was spoken about. We had two different ones because there's a portion where it's going from the, the street into the home and then there's a longer portion. So we had two different groups. There's about twenty seven residential and two business lines that we actually have identified. Again, out of our size of a community that's two hundred years old, this is, you know, very, very small. You know, Birmingham, I think, had over seventeen hundred. And then you had communities like Kalamazoo that had over seventy thousand. So, you know, for us, we, we had a, a, a very reasonable amount when we got, got, got into this. And a lot of that is because the city has, over the last twenty five years, been replacing and updating our infrastructure with the water and sewer line. So big kudos to us that we're only down to, to these twenty seven. I will note that we are looking at replacing all of those within a year's timeframe. So all those residential lines would be replaced. We're expecting the bids in early September. And then we'll be bringing an award of contract hopefully with the first meeting in September. Sandy's already noted that the ribbon cutting due to us not having the the tile and carpeting and some things is pushed back. So we'll keep, keep council updated as, as we get those final materials in and installed. And then finally, at their last council meeting, there was a request regarding the social drinking districts. Want, wants to kind of update council that both staff as well as the DDA. The DDA actually had this topic as discussed twice, if not three times on, two that I saw on their agenda. And really the logistics, when you read the law, it's problematic. It's not like New Orleans where you could just say the, the DDA or the whole downtown could be a district. It's where a business would be able to extend out onto their platform. So they have to maintain the, really the chain of custody, if you will, with that alcohol and that person who's actually consuming it. So when we've talked with the, the restaurants right now, there's not been, any of them have been interested in this. What they've noted is the platforms are kind of really addressing that portion as well as the state's drink to go. So before, where restaurants were really concerned about the alcohol sitting on their shelves and they weren't able to sell it. They were only able to do the takeout. Now with the, the drinks to go, they're actually seeing movement and so there's no longer concern. Those were the items that I had.
Comments on that? Okay, on to miscellaneous. The two chiefs and Nick sitting in the dark back there, any comments?
You know, we're saving energy here. I would just tell you that they started work on the bypass, the Clinton River bypass channel. Eagle and everybody that, us and the hills and Clinton River folks all stepped up and they got money and got rolling. So they're starting the work in that river. Lots of signs on the river to warn the kayakers about what's ahead of them. So they're anticipating getting that quickly done, which is a really good thing, which will help re-energize the dam. And the gentleman that owns the dam at Yates is going to do his work now while it's down. So that he'll be ready to go and hopefully he can get his presses going to give it the water. So that's it for me.
A quick report, Mr. Mayor, in regards to COVID. Today, the local fire chiefs from Oxford, Addison, Orion, Oakland Township, Troy, Rochester, Rochester Hills and Auburn Hills met today for about an hour and a half or two hours just making sure that we had all of our plans and reviewed our, our lessons learned from the COVID surge that started out in March. So that if there happens to be anything start for this fall, that we're well prepared with equipment processes and procedures. Just doing a little bit of war gaming in the event that something does come back. All of the local chiefs are aligned and ready to operate as one unit.
Very good. We hope it doesn't come back, but I think.
So, so do we, but we just wanted to make sure that we were prepared.
I think it could, so hopefully that doesn't happen. City Clerk O'Connor.
Nothing to add this evening. I did send council memo updating clerk's office yesterday, so.
Very good. Councilmember Sage, you had a question? Got to mute, mute.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. The question is actually for City Clerk O'Connor. So appreciate the update. So what is the first day you can actually send out the ballots for those that have requested absentee?
So by law, the county is to deliver, has to deliver ballots to us by forty five days before the election, which is Saturday, the nineteenth. Then the first thing that has to be done is them tested through the machines to make sure that there's no printing errors or problems between the ballots and the machines. And then it's going to take a few days to stuff those ballots. So I expect that I will be able to be ready by the Saturday, the twenty sixth for those to start being picked up. And then Monday, the twenty eighth, start having the extra hours and.
Okay, I, I didn't know if there was a state guideline, so it's the forty five days. So on the twenty sixth, meaning an absentee voter could actually come to City Hall and pick up there?
Well, in, in all techni- technically, Monday, the twenty first, if someone were to come in and I have ballots in, in possession and they need it, then they could come in. But realistically, I need those few days to stuff the ones I already have. So, but if anyone were to come in, they would, they would get one if they needed it right then. I encourage them to wait, but.
Yeah, I would suggest we mail those as soon as we can.
Yes.
We will. And then to, to the clerk's point, we will also have the full schedule of the extended hours that she's recommending. Posted up on our website.
And we also communicate the location of the, there is a drop box for absentee ballots right in case you do not want to mail and you want to literally physically drop them off at City Hall.
Correct. And I'll be in, having better signage around our drop box that it is for absentee ballots as well.
Okay, Mayor Protem Bivakwa.
Yeah, a question for, for Leanne. So in the communication you sent, you, you mentioned something about it would behoove us to plan a pickup. Do, maybe it's a question for Blaine too. Do we need to discuss that at council? Is that?
No, I don't think so. I was just letting you know that I, I would be going forward with that unless there was any concerns. But I will, I will be doing that on my own and advertising it in the post and, and.
What is?
Website and news flashes, but I'll wait until after September first, simply so that people don't get confused with the dates. I'm afraid if I put the twenty sixth out there now, I'll start getting phone calls in two days.
But yeah.
I'm sorry, Mayor Protem.
Yeah, I was just gonna say, Leanne, can you just briefly, since I opened Pandora's Box here, can you explain what it was that you were suggesting?
So having office hours Saturday, September twenty sixth, or an advertising for people to come in and pick up their ballots that have already requested them. So we have the, applications were dual application for August and November. So a majority of people requested both ballots, so I have those applications now. And in fact, I'm, I'm issuing them yesterday and today. So we'll advertise it and say, hey, we, those of you that have already applied, we have them ready. If you want to come in and pick it up rather than us putting it in the mail. I have already gotten a lot of phone calls about that, so I think we need to provide that service, so.
I, I, I think we need to make that an agenda item before we go ahead with that for council to discuss. We're making, I, I'm not saying I'm for or against it, but I think that's a, you know, we need to talk about that, I think.
Okay.
Councilmember Keithley.
We have an agenda that's before then, so we could add it to the September fourteenth agenda.
Thank you.
Okay.
Councilmember Keithley.
I, I was just going to, to add that I appreciated the extended hours. I saw that this is something Rochester Hills is doing as well. And I think that the more access we give people to drop off and pick up their, their ballots, the stronger our elections are in general. So I really appreciated the initiative going forward on those extended hours.
Good. Attorney Jeff Carr.
Nothing, thank you, Stephen.
Okay, Councilmember Albert.
Um, yeah, I was really, you know, this, this is like nine months into my, my post here as a, as a, as a council member. And I, I'm on the tree committee, the budget committee, the infrastructure committee. We've had a lot of meetings lately, but it really gave me a chance to meet my fellow committee members and work with administration. I'm, I'm, you know, outside of Amanda, the rest of you have had this experience in the past. But the interaction between city administration, the residents that are on some of these committees and the council members has been nothing short of fantastic. And then, you know, Blaine, Nick. the council members has been nothing short of fantastic. And then, you know, Blaine, Nick, Leanne, Marcy, Anthony, Jeff, Sandy and her team, Jane, just this whole process is very refreshing. And I didn't really realize how much went on behind the scenes as a, on the committees that then are brought to city council. So again, I just want to applaud, you know, I always talk about my three-legged stool. We've got city council members, we've got administration, and now we've got residents on these committees. So bravo to all of them. Thank you.
Thank you for your service and you sound like you want to be on more committees. So thank you. Councilmember Salvia? You mute, mute?
Okay, unmuted. Just real quick, just wanted to state that from a community house standpoint, the RFP is out there for the remodel renovation. It's due back September 10th.
Thank you. Councilmember Sage?
Uh, nothing this evening, sir.
Mayor Protem Bavakwa?
Nothing for me either. Thank you.
Councilmember Keith Lee?
Nothing for me tonight, Mayor. Thank you.
Councilmember Peterson?
I just wanted to say thank you to Leanne for the work she's been doing regarding the election and her staff and also to thank them all for taking care of us in the election.
Good. I'd just also like to thank the city clerk. I know this election is going to be challenging. So I appreciate the job. Looking forward to you hired an assistant, Brian, who used to, we, some of us know from, he was an intern here and things. And well-respected. So looking forward to him working here. And then the thing I'm kind of saying every week is just all of us need to be leaders when it comes to wearing mask and social distancing and all that, because that's the way virus under control, I think. So without further ado, meeting is adjourned. Thank you, everybody, for coming.
Thank you.
Good night, everybody.
Great.